Good afternoon. Thank you for tuning in. I just decided to do this session rather impromptu, just on the spot. And I'm thinking about hosting these type of sessions going forward. So what I'm going to do is I'm gonna record myself hosting this meeting by myself for now with the intention to send it out to those of you that are on the staffing agency's success, the staffing agency startup drive, the mailing list. I'm gonna send it all out to you guys and let you guys decide whether or not I should start doing weekly work sessions free of charge, just maybe an hour work session to just come in, ask your questions and work through my workflow with me. So it's Monday and I'm just gonna show you how I typically work on my job orders. I don't always work on the job orders. I do have recruiters. So I'm gonna really show how I set it up for the recruiters, but if I were working the job order directly from the VMS, I'm gonna show how I would work it. So this is part of the queue. I cannot show you everything because there are trade secrets. I cannot show you the VMS system. I have that minimized down at the bottom because it has client information, obviously. But I can show you how I scrub that information and hand it off to my recruiters. I don't even show my recruiter, my offshore recruiter, I don't show her all the details on the client. I just give her pretty much exactly what she needs to do her job, which is making the job posting, doing the candidate sourcing, and different tasks when it comes to attacking the job order. So as of this morning, when I went into the VMS system, we have a total of two hundred and eight, I think it is, hold on a second, we have a total of two hundred and eight open job orders. That's two hundred and eight positions that we're looking to fill between June twenty-sixth and a lot of these are July third start dates. So all of these are July third start dates. There are a variety of types of positions from radiologic technicians, certified medical assistants, registered nurses, med lab technicians, physical therapists, et cetera, et cetera. These are all allied health roles. So I've already identified the role that I want to focus on, that I wanna focus on this week, that I want my recruiters to focus on, that I want CareDynamics to focus on. There is a hospital out in Kansas that needs to hire thirty or twenty-nine med surg nurses. So with these positions, I'm gonna go into the job order. This information is pulled directly from the VMS. I pull that information essentially copying and pasting it into a Google document. And just really quickly, what we were looking at as far as the queue, I go in and I create an Excel spreadsheet. I try to do these every Monday or Friday with all the open job orders. So that if by chance my recruiter is not working on anything, she can send an email with the job order number and that prompts me to go into the VMS, pull up the information. Let me show you what this looks like. This is the queue. This is the spreadsheet. It has the job order number and just some basic information about the job order. So my technician, well, excuse me, my recruiter will just pull up a job order, whether she knows what I want her to work on or she sees something that she can work on. She pulls up a job order and essentially sends me and another member of my team an email that essentially states that I wanna start working on this job order. Send me the details. So this is how we get to here. When I know what job order we are working on, when I have assigned one or it's brought to my attention that we need to prioritize a particular job order, I go into the VMS system that we are partnered with and I pull the information directly from the VMS. I put it into a Google document and I send it back to the recruiter for her to start working on. And when I say start working, I'm gonna show you the workflow for how I attack an order, how she attacks the order. It's completely up to her. She, she has her own method of working that works for her because she has worked with other agencies before. I have my methods. We kinda allow each other to work however we want to work. There are certain things that I as staffing agency owner want done that she's gonna do, but pretty much I leave it up to her as to how she goes about the candidate sourcing. So let's get that part started. So we have a brand new job order here. That order was last updated on the sixteenth, so these are brand new. We just got these last week. The profession is registered nurse. Let's see if I can make this a little bit bigger. All right, so profession is for registered nurse. The specialty is a med surg nurse. The location is Salina, Kansas. The tentative start date is July third, twenty twenty-three. There are a total of thirty positions they're looking to fill. Somebody's already filled one, so we have twenty-nine left. It's a night shift, seven PM to seven AM, twelve-hour shift. So this is the important, important part for me as an agency. This is how I decided whether or not I wanna work on this particular order or not. You can, as a staffing agency owner, you can work on whatever orders you wanna work on. You can work in allied health. You can work in manufacturing. You can work in trucking. You can work in administrative hospitality. You can work whatever niche you want. For me, I have found it beneficial to focus on the roles that command at least seventy-five thousand dollars per year. If you know anything about the staffing industry, particularly direct placement, we place, we collect our fees based off of a percentage of that person's first year salary. Know that person that does not come out of their money. The person that is being hired, the candidate is not being charged anything for our services. We are charging the client, the company that is enlisting us to help them with their staffing needs. So the company is who's gonna receive that invoice. So let's just do some simple math. I pulled up a calculator for the sake of showing you, but I already, I'm able to do this math like in my head most of the time on pen and paper, but for the sake of this video, I'm gonna do the math right here on the calculator so you can see how we calculate our direct placement fees. So this particular client, they want this med surg RN nurse and they're willing to pay that person anywhere from twenty-nine dollars per hour to forty-three dollars per hour. What the client ultimately decides to pay that candidate if they're given an offer is between what that candidate and the client negotiate as well as that client's skills, background and expertise and just their experience. So I'm gonna calculate it out on both ends for you. At the low end, at twenty-nine dollars per hour, these are based on a forty-hour work week. So we're gonna do twenty-nine times forty hours. So eleven sixty a week is what they're looking to pay this person. Times fifty-two because there are fifty-two weeks in a year. That gives an annual salary of sixty thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Now, important, next important thing about this is the permanent placement fee for this particular role is eighteen percent. My percentages, when I'm doing my own direct placements outside of the VMS, my placement can be anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent. But when I'm working in the VMS, they've already negotiated their percentages and we're just jumping in the VMS and whittling down the queue. So at eighteen percent, let's go back to the calendar, excuse me, the calculator and multiply that sixty thousand three hundred and twenty by point one eight or eighteen percent. So at the low end, that this particular placement is going to command ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents if we place it. And at the high end, I said that they were willing to pay this person forty-three dollars an hour. So we're gonna do forty-three times forty hours a week times point eighteen, I'm sorry, times fifty-two. That gives us an annual salary of eighty-nine thousand four hundred and forty times point one eight, that eighteen percent. So at the high end, we're looking to collect or invoice for sixteen thousand ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents if our person is placed and they complete, you know, the sixty days or thirty days or ninety days, whatever is in your contract as far as placement terms for your direct placement. So now we're, we know we're looking at a range of anywhere from ten thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents to sixteen thousand ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. If we make this placement, there are twenty-nine placements available. So let's just play with this, just being unrealistic, but just, just playing with the numbers. I like to play with the numbers. If perchance I was able to make all twenty-nine placements that are left, I doubt that, but just in case, the, the revenue potential just for making the placements on the RNs alone, four hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. That's the revenue potential for the maximum placement amount for this particular role. So as you can see, that's a lot of money, right? So I showed you how much you can make from one placement to the max. So let's go ahead. This is how I determine that I wanna work on this particular job order. Out of two hundred and eight job orders, we have to go in and we have to determine which ones we wanna give our energy to. I prefer to attack the ones that are a higher dollar value. There are other people who specialized in volume, direct placements, meaning they do a lot of volume. So they take a lot of the low-paying roles that are easier to fill and they fill a lot of them and they're able to make their money by volume. As opposed to me, I like to focus on making the maximum amount of money from one placement. Honestly, everybody, you, you determine what works for you. In certain industries like hospitality, for example, you're gonna have to probably do volume. But if you're looking to do engineering as your niche, you probably don't have to do value. You could probably volume, you can probably do one placement that gives you enough revenue, revenue for the month if you can make that placement. All right, so we've calculated the money. I'm gonna move that over and just set it to the side in case I need it again. We're gonna go back into this job order. Now, this job order, I usually scrub this information and only the information that my recruiter or my gonna need to make the placement. So the next thing I do after I look at the details of the position is just look at how I'm going to build a Indeed post, a LinkedIn post. How am I gonna post for this job to start attracting nurses applying to this role? The other thing is if you have built enough of a candidate pool, which is your goal as a staffing agency, you may have a pool of candidates that you can pull from already who you can go and say, hey, I have this role available. Are you interested? I don't live in Salina, Kansas. I don't live in Kansas, so I don't have a built-up pool of RNs in that area. So I'm going to have to post for the job. I'm gonna have to put a post on Indeed. I'm gonna have to put a post on LinkedIn. I'm gonna have to do Facebook posts. I'm gonna have to market this role, okay? And, and, and get my network to reach out to me. So I have all of the information for the role. I don't necessarily, like all this stuff that says, as from the client information, I'm going to take that out because I don't necessarily want my candidate to know the client is. Reason being, if they know who the client is, they can go directly to the client usually and apply. So there's no reason for them to come through us. So I just make sure I go and I proofread all the information in the job posting so that I can make a decent enough post. Now, there's a couple of ways that I do my job postings. I can do it manually. I know how to write a job post fairly easily. But what I have been doing is I have been using ChatGPT. So I'm gonna start a new chat with ChatGPT and I'm going to prompt ChatGPT. So I'm gonna say you are a healthcare recruiter looking to make a direct placement for the role of medical surge registered nurse. Here is job order from client. He's and I'm just telling ChatGPT what I want done. Please remove all information at identify client and create an optimized Indeed app. All right, so that's, I'm gonna start it off. Sometimes you have to tweak these, but right now, I'm just gonna take I'm gonna take a good portion of this. I'm gonna take this whole thing here. All of this. Copying and pasting and throw it into ChatGPT and just see what they throw out. I might have to edit it. I'm just see what, what ChatGPT gives me. Oh baby, ChatGPT is giving me what I want. They're giving it to me well. Awesome. Okay, so I don't have to edit it. Like you can see there, ChatGPT is giving me everything I want and they're making sure to remove remove everything that identifies the client. So of course, I'm gonna proofread it. I'm gonna take this whole thing out of ChatGPT and I'm gonna throw it inside of same full document, put it at the bottom, I can work with and edit it. So let's just look at it and see what it says. This is gonna be edited down because Indeed does not like job titles that look like this. They just want a job title that says medical surgical registered nurse, or they just wanted to say registered nurse and then you call out what specific type of nurse it is down in the job posting. So Indeed will block your job post if it's not what they call a quality ad title. Location, nights, based on education experience. Perfect, perfect. We're currently looking for, bom, bom, bom. Perfect. Excellent, excellent, excellent. Excellent. Right, and this is important. It's kinda letting them know that this is the agency, so only candidates who have not directly applied to this position are eligible to be onboarded through an agency. Um, you know what? I wanna remove that. That's a good little blurb, but I wanna remove it. Submit your application with an updated resume and relevant certifications. Excellent. So this is why I like ChatGPT. Usually I do all of this manually. ChatGPT just did it for me. So now I'm gonna go in and I'm gonna open up a tab for Indeed. Let me just show you how this is what we do. So we're gonna log into Indeed. And we're gonna create a job post. Now, I have posted a job similar, I've posted several of these before. So I can use a previous job template, but for you, you would be doing this from scratch. So do I wanna show you from scratch or? I, I really don't feel like showing you from scratch, but if anybody needs any particular help with this, um, with this part of it, just email me and we can, we can go over it. But I, I feel like it's creating a new post is self-explanatory. So I'm gonna go the easy route because I know I've worked on this, this particular thing before. So I'm gonna use a job post that's already been approved by Indeed so that I know I don't have any problems. So there it is there from back in May in the same location. So I'm gonna use that, like you can see, I've posted like eighty different jobs. So I'm just gonna use one that I've already used before. And there you have it. It comes up for you. The job name, registered nurse, very simple because you can post all that other stuff in your job title, but Indeed is not gonna like it and they're gonna flag your post for quality and they're not gonna post it. So I'm posting what works. So I'm just gonna go in here and edit the details to make sure it matches the current posting. So we said twenty-nine to forty-two. Let me just verify what it said. It's uh, twenty-nine to forty-three now, so I'm going to update that. Permanent, we are actually looking to fill twenty-nine, so it's ten plus. Hiring timeline, this person is set to start on July third. So we have a little bit of time here, so I'm not gonna pick one to two weeks because I want this to be prioritized. So I'm gonna pick three to seven days because the sooner we can get our person in and get them onboarded, the better. Standard shift, we know that this is a night shift, twelve-hour overnight shift, so I have night shift, evening shift, overnight shift selected. This is likely to be a four, four by twelve. These are the benefits. So now I'm gonna come into the job description. This is what I had before for a med surg nurse. I could actually leave this. I could leave this how it is. I've used this before, but I like what ChatGPT gave me this time. So I'm gonna utilize that. I'm gonna take that from ChatGPT because it's, it's simplified. I like it. So I'm going to replace the old one that I was using with the new one that I have from ChatGPT. And basically I made this one myself. It's off of the information that was in the VMS. I like how ChatGPT simplified even that. So that part is done. This can stay as is. Applied method, I said it's an email. Resume required, yes. It tells it where to send the email. I do allow the candidate to message me. Sometimes you may wanna turn that off if you are not logging back into your Indeed and checking, but it's up to you. Receive calls from potential candidates. I usually put that on no, but I actually want them to be able to call me because I wanna go ahead and make sure that I prioritize the candidate. So I'm gonna put my phone number in there. I mean, and let them, if we have a potential candidate, I wanna go ahead and let them call me and talk to me directly. Employer assist. You can automatically decline certain candidates. All right, so we're gonna just confirm this. Now, what I like to do with these must haves and nice to haves is I remove them. You can use them, but it's just one extra step that stops the person. My, the bottom line for me as a staffing agency, I just wanna receive the resume. I need, I, I'll identify what I need. Just send me the resume. So I save and continue because as you know, you're not gonna necessarily hire every person that submits a resume, but you are gonna review those resumes and keep them for in the event that you may have something for them in the future. So my goal, even with posting these job orders, is to continue building my database of candidates. I don't do the, the pre-recorded phone screening and the background questions and all that. I take all of that out. I just want my job posted and I want people to get to applying. All right, so this is what we talked about. This is how I ended up with that crazy bill from, um, who was it? LinkedIn. This right here. They want me to pay eighty-six dollars per application to sponsor the ad. You do not have to do that. Your ad may or may not get seen. It's not gonna be posted as a sponsored job, so it's not gonna show up at the top. But if a registered nurse in Salina, Kansas is looking for a role, your job is probably gonna show up. So there is no need to sponsor it at this time. There are reasons to sponsor your ads. Like if you're hiring urgently and you need to get somebody in, into a client tomorrow or something, or you just have a highly specialized niche where finding candidates would be few and far between, but for registered nurses, they're everywhere. So I'm not going to pay for that. So I'm going to say, no, thank you. That's how you bypass that, folks. I get a lot of questions about it. I just say, no, thank you. Now, what it tries to do, this new feature, is it'll try to match you with candidates just to screen the candidates for you. So is this a potential candidate, a good fit? Charged nurse RN. Let's see. Yeah, looks like she might be. So I'm gonna say yes. They got seven of these for me to look through. Is this a, this is just helping them to better identify who they recommend for the role. RN staff nurse at travel company. Hmm, she might be. Clinical services director, ER trauma nurse. RN license, maybe. Registered nurse. Now, keep in mind, we're looking for a med surg nurse. So even though these look pretty good, they might not be the best for this role, but we still wanna get them submitting resumes because they might be good for something else. So I'm gonna say yes. The only thing I would probably say no to is if they're not RNs. If they, it just throws up some random person, I'll probably reject that. So yes, this person, like this person, this person is an LPN. So they would not be a good fit for this particular role, so I'm gonna say no. But they might be good for some other role. I'm just not gonna say. Actually, you know what? I'm gonna say yes to this for that reason. Even though they're not a registered nurse, they would not be a good fit for this role. They'll probably be good, a good fit for some LPN roles that I have. So I'm gonna say yes. And then I'm gonna continue. All right. So this one is pending. And actually, the job, the old job is still open. I see it here now. The old job posting is still open, so that's good. It's probably not being seen because you don't see anybody applying for it, but it's cool. So right now, the one that we just posted is gone to pending status. So that's all we need to do with that. We sit back and we wait on people to apply via Indeed. And that's it with that one. So now I'm gonna go post it on LinkedIn. LinkedIn is the tricky one. I'm not going LinkedIn job post. I have a pretty extensive network. So I'm gonna post this post on the CareDynamics business page. So I'm gonna take that ChatGPT post, copy. I'm gonna make a actually, I'm gonna show you something else that ChatGPT can do. I am going to, when I'm posting like a social media type post, I like for those posts to be more interesting. So I'm gonna take this same post that ChatGP just gave me and I'm gonna tell Chat, ChatGPT, make this into a captivating LinkedIn post. Not a job post, LinkedIn. Gonna look different. See, they throw emojis and things in there that might make it more social media eye-catching. So this is what I would post on LinkedIn. This is what I would post on Facebook. I can even shorten it, shorten it and post it on, um, post it on Instagram, make a graphic for it. Like, there's so many different ways. So you as a staffing agency owner, you have to decide you have to decide where you want to be putting your job post. You can use job boards. You can use social media. You can use Facebook groups and participate in the groups on LinkedIn. You can indefinitely post them on your own website. I'm gonna show you that also because you want to have your own job board. Also, especially when a lot of these, these um other job bo- boards require you to pay. It's good to have your own job board, and it's good to have your own email list where you can jump out there and contact your own people. Oh, that's how that's gonna look. I'm gonna space it out, make it look desirable. Actually, I want to space this out a little bit more. And of course, you want to proofread it. But I'm happy, I'm did, I'm happy with what they put in there. Alright. Super good. Guys, excuse me, my son is in the background. It is summertime, so he is home. And he likes to be right up under me, no matter what I'm doing. See. A red website right quick and and link it directly to the website because I have it where people can apply, submit their resumes. So I want this to be there. They can submit their resume or reply. I actually probably have the job still listed. Do you see one for Salina, Kansas? If I don't, I'll come back and make a job posting for it. But either way, whether I have a job posting for it or not, I have this feel here where people can come and just submit their resumes without applying to any particular position. So I want to put that link here. Like imply, apply here. Of course, they can inbox me directly. Um please ensure that's your resume. I might even put in there telling them to email the resume to the recruiter. Click here to apply or email the resume to hello@caredynamics. This email that um me and my entire team has as opposed to info@caredynamics. That's just me. So yeah, this looks phenomenal. Now, I might want to add like a graphic, a a nice picture or something. Since it's going on po- social media. Let's see if I got one. If I have one on here. If not, it's okay to just post it by itself. I want to say this is the one. I'll use this one. This one is fine. This one is not geared specifically to this particular role, but um it's good enough. So we're gonna just add like a little graphic down there. Cool. And then we're gonna post it. Once I post it to the business site, I then go and share it to my profile. I'm just gonna put that I am hiring. We hiring. You see that purple ribbon too, right here on my LinkedIn. It says hiring. So if you have that functionality on your LinkedIn, you might want to turn that that on too. Hmm, it's surge nurse. I'm gonna put no of any great med surge registered nurses in. Alright. That's all I'm gonna say about that. And I'm gonna post it. And then I can post the same thing on um Instagram. Let me show you how I would make this into an Instagram post. I would simply tell it um shorten for Instagram. Be awesome marketing team. So what I would do is I could take that same picture, post it on Instagram or whatever graphic that I want, and take this and post it and make an Instagram post about it. Let me show you how I do those. Um use Canva. My recruiter, she uses, I gotta find out. I'll find out for next time. She uses something else, but I'm a Canva person to make my graphics. Um so I come in and I make different things inside of Canva. So the one that I just showed you is in here somewhere, but I can pretty much make any post. This is the one. So let's just say I wanted to update it because it does not have nurses there. I could just come in and add. Okay, in there, let's make it bigger. Like I could just update my flyers to be whatever, and then I can post them on um social media. I'll do another post another day about Facebook ad marketing, like how to do it properly. You don't want to be out here boosting posts and things of that nature. Like there's a a a way to do Facebook ads the right way. And that's a whole other training unto itself, and it's applicable to any business. So we're creating another ad. If I wanted to go and update the ad here, I could do that. So this is the first part of sourcing for a job. It's going in here looking at the job post. So this is, this is what we do. Then from here, after we start receiving resumes, we start interviewing people. So I'm gonna stop the video now and leave you with this for now. And then y'all let me know if you wanna, you're interested in participating in these work sessions, maybe once a week, once every two weeks, where I walk through things like this in real time. Because I do want to come back and show you guys what happens when I receive a resume, how I get on the phone, talk to the candidate, et cetera, et cetera. But this is essentially how you begin working the job order. Now, once I get some resumes back, we're gonna interview the person, of course. And then we're gonna, I can show you how we prep the package for them to send over to the client and hopefully get them scheduled for an interview and then get them placed. And then once they start on the first day, let's say um they're set to start on July third. Once I confirm that that person, you know, has received their offer letter and they're starting on July third, on July third is when we would send out a um invoice to the client, if it was a direct client. In this case, it's a V M F thing, so the V M S is gonna handle all of that, the invoice, and then they pay us once placements are made. So that's the difference between working in a V M S and working in your own, with your own clients. The clients in this instance belong to the V M S system. So the V M S handles a lot of the client, well, all of the client outreach. We just send them our clients. I'm sorry, we send them our candidates that we're placing, and we follow them through the recruitment cycle and get paid directly from the V M S. So in this case, the client is not cutting, would not be cutting us a check. The V M S system would. So that's the advantage of working with the V M S system. All the jobs are already in the profile for you. You just come in and you work them. The disadvantage, I would say, of working with the V M S is um slow pay. They don't always pay, and some of them are not always good about keeping up with the clients that, the candidates that you're submitting. So sometimes your candidate honestly might get lost. If you don't have a good way of tracking your applicants through the system, through your own systems, and keeping up with the V M S where they are in the V M S system, um you could very well lose candidates. So just keep that in mind. So we're going to stop this share here. If you have any questions, of course, you can email me info@caredynamicsFL.com. And I am Sean Thompson of Care Dynamics, signing off.